For motion to approve the minutes of the March tenth meeting.
I move that we approve the agenda for the March tenth meeting.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You mean April fourteenth meeting?
No, that's today.
We're just doing the agenda approval.
Oh, the agenda, yes, excuse me.
Agenda.
April fourteenth, excuse me.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Sorry.
Minutes and also the minutes for the previous meetings.
I would like one change in the minutes to reflect that the, sorry. It was stated that the Centric link created a disconnection of a pipe up there. On the fiber optic thing, unlike the minutes to reflect, it was not Centric link's fault, but the fault of the contractor who put in a faulty pipe twenty years ago. They banded together with some garbage and it started leaking. It was broken and they didn't replace it and it looks like it's been that way.
Okay, so that's back on page three, Bill, that you're talking about.
Yes, down where Herman reported working.
You wanted to reflect on that.
Fault of contractor, not fiber optic crew. From what I've seen of the pipe and anybody wants to look at it, it's amazing, it's in the quality.
So from when it was installed originally in the city?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
And then they helped us discover one of our leaks in town?
Right.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Any other corrections?
Jerry Hewitt's name is spelled wrong, but I don't know if that's any real.
Where is that one?
On the first page two, with the red color. That's the one that we added last, it's under the general approval.
H E W E T T. And that's the only place we had it in minutes.
Okay, I move the, so, the minutes from March tenth, and can we do the other one?
Yes, should do both of them at the same time.
From March tenth and the special meeting of March eighteenth.
Do you second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Treasurer's report.
Okay, my report tonight, I want you to know that we have a total of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seven cents in all funds. The Avista bill was one thousand dollars less than last month. Sharon Abili was paid for the work she has done for the city in giving Norine further training, and we made a payment to First Step Internet for six months of our internet service. We do that.
I wonder, I thought that was kind of high, but that's how it works.
It's for six months, rather than paying this small amount monthly, we pay them once every six months. And on the water system quarterly report, please note that we have attained the balance in the LGIP State Reserve Fund required by the USDA Rural Water in the amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-two cents, which is one yearly water bond payment reserve. And in your packet, that would be the last page down at the bottom where it says RD Reserve Balance. And that was something that was required of us and.
So we've met that?
We have met that.
Very good.
Yes. And that's all for the treasurer's report.
Make a motion to approve treasurer's report.
We did make a motion?
No.
No, we're waiting.
I make a motion, we pay the bills and accept the treasurer's report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Report. Council planning.
Just a brief thing, I hope everybody got to see that lovely little sign coming into the city. It was put up by the Gem Community. And I would like to start working on a design, a new one down here, it'd be about two hundred bucks for that size, in color, or redo something. It just says City Community Center.
On the wall?
Yeah, like we painted over. If there's a general consensus to work on it, I'll start working on some designs to get input from everybody who's a general consensus. Would you like a sign over there?
Where's it at?
Right there on that street side, it says.
On the wall? There used to be one out there that said, what did it say?
Call it set.
Called a set community.
But when we painted, we painted over it. So he's, it would be like at the corner of the building down here.
Because a lot of people drive by.
They don't know where this, they don't know where it is.
I get a task, so I'm sitting here anyway.
We do lettering, we have a stick called lettering.
Same thing, it'll break when we paint it.
Yeah, we had to, it was pretty sad, it was pretty sad. And we'll just work on some ideas.
Can we do what, East End of Town?
The Gem Community's working on doing another one, I liked it so well, so I hope everybody liked this one.
That's great.
I haven't seen it. I go from my store to the house.
I know, because see the halls of the house.
Is there anything on planning and zoning?
No, we have something on the council reports, by the gavel.
We found that we have to, as a council, appoint the city clerk. The way we did it wasn't quite legal.
When we hired her?
When we hired her. It was just a.
I'm hired, but not appointed.
Misconception of, what do you call it, protocol or something.
That came out of the training session, right?
Mm-hmm, from the training session.
So the mayor doesn't just do it, we have to make a motion?
Yes.
We have to have the council approval to appoint Norine as a city clerk.
And treasurer.
This is, this is to the benefit of the city. And it doesn't give her as many outs, it becomes to making decisions against her. But it's to benefit the city and also be legal.
Well then, we just make a motion.
Make a motion.
I move that we've placed, Norine is the new city clerk, treasurer, mostly had a task that she has.
Do you second?
Clean that up. That's what you say to the clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. You're legal.
Now we start saying.
This has just been a test.
Exactly.
She's been here ninety days now.
Now, planning and zoning, there's nothing to report. For the clerk report, I met with Smith Otto today, and he gave me a little update to share with you about the youth program. He's been doing the program for about one month now, and each Saturday night, he has about fifteen kids show up, sometimes the same, sometimes new. And he says it's been going really well, they've played basketball golf and baseball with, of course, a softball in the gym. And he's been keeping, aside on my part, he's been keeping it very clean. And today, since they had food in their Saturday night, he came by and he got the mop and bucket and mopped the gym for us. So he's been very dedicated to the kids and also to City Hall for keeping things up here. And I wanted to share that with you. And then also, I wanted to report back on the property that you'd asked me to follow up with the city attorney, Ed Lettnecker, about the property owner at five oh three Cul-de-sac Avenue moving in the new double-wide mobile home and the paperwork that I'd been given. And I followed up with Ed, and he contacted the tribal lawyer and didn't get too nice of a response. And in the meantime, the landowner came and we worked on a compromise where they'd work with our building inspector without a building permit and follow our city code for any of his building in Cul-de-sac. And he met with our building inspector, Jim Yeoman, and Jim was very satisfied with this arrangement. He thought it was a very good solution. He wanted me to share with the council that basically, he's our new building inspector, I'm the new city clerk. But in the past, the other building inspector, when he found out that work was by a tribal member in town, okay, someone's doing some building, is it a tribal member? Yes, that was it. He would not inspect, he says they're tribal members, we don't inspect it. So that's why the past city clerk did not pursue it further because of what her building inspector was telling her. And then I came on board and had a building inspector saying, well, why don't they, you know, get it? And so that's where we got into where we were at the last meeting. The building inspector's happy with the compromise, and if the council is not, then we would need to instruct our city attorney to go further.
Are you saying that we, he's not required to have a building permit?
Because this is reservation.
Isn't that what our attorney said?
Not our attorney, that is, that background I gave you, Mike, was from how the past building inspector handled for years.
I wish to ask him.
Well, he did, he went to the tribe and he didn't get a very nice response, and it, you know, we can have him pursue with the tribe, but, you know, it'll.
The tribe would love to take us on.
All over the building permit.
It's, but.
And long as we follow code.
As long as he meets code, Mike, and everything is to code. I know, we're, it's a kettle of worms.
I'm disagreeing with that.
Yeah. And the building inspector's been up there, he's worked with him on making sure that everything is going in per code, and he updates me weekly on that.
I think that's a plus if we keep the code.
As long as he meets code, that was my concern.
We've gotten to this point with that precedence in the city for tribal members.
I hate to bankrupt the city.
I'm saying it takes very long to do.
It wouldn't take very long, and I think the tribe would jump on anything. That eight percent.
But if you're right, you're right.
Any other thought?
No, no, so it sounds great to me, long as we meet code, that's all. Building permits aren't that terribly expensive.
And then I wanted the council to be aware that the city computer, the one computer we have, uses Microsoft XP operating system. As you're probably aware, Microsoft has stopped providing security updates for this system as of April eighth. And everything I have been reading about that, it says to stay off the internet if you have an XP operating system and sensitive information on your computer, which we have all the city's financial information on our computer. Also, we do our banking online for the city. And so I wanted you to know that I did contact our computer guy that helps us with our system, and he's going to come out to review our system and give me some advice on this system, so I wanted you to be aware.
We put a new computer in there a couple of years ago, top of the line.
It's top of the line, it's the new computer.
It was XP?
But XP was put on it at the request.
Oh, that's because you need XP to run that program.
I don't think we'd be able to run our billing software if we went up to seven, eight. And so I thought, you know, I'll talk to the computer expert, but maybe we might consider an inexpensive laptop with the Microsoft seven or eight point one that would be just for the online work and keep the city computer just for doing the city business.
You might get a lot greater from the XP than Windows eight.
Right.
Asking about, okay, the Windows eight, we'd probably be cheaper to buy a laptop.
It may be cheaper, but then we may have difficulty running our billing program for our bills. The water service garbage bills are run through a DOS program.
Okay, just, I get, I get, what else is just to ask you?
Oh, of course.
Updating from XP to the A.
That would be my first one, but, yeah. I just wanted you to be aware, and I won't do anything without reporting back on what we find out.
Are you guys speaking English?
At least it's not DOS operated.
Thank you, thank you. And then also, in your council packet, I have put, just some seat of information and information about a couple upcoming events that you had been invited to, to see if you wanted to do. One was an online class about prepare emergency notification, and if you had any interest, I could register you. That's the end of my report, Mayor Bob. Oh, but I have another report.
Well, that was quick. It's just from the treasurer instead of the clerk.
Oh, I've been treasurer clerk, now I'm maintenance. I did want to report that there will be no maintenance report tonight, Mayor Bob, because Herman's sister passed away this weekend, and he was, took a bereavement day and was handling things on that. And Jason was going to try to fill in for him, but he is stuck with his kids, taking care of his kids at home, couldn't make it, and there probably wouldn't have been room for his young kids anyway. I do know that Herman has told me, and especially for you, council member, Bill, that we are pumping ten thousand gallons less a day from the leak that was found up on, with our contractor. So now that's repaired, it's making a difference by ten thousand gallons. And that area had no evidence of a leak around on the upper ground.
You think it'd come out the side of the hill? This was up on Upper Cul-de-sac Avenue, and that ten thousand gallons, not a drop, but it came out the side of the hill?
No, it didn't came, it didn't come in the yards. I live real close to where that was, and we haven't had any extra green grass.
Probably lose a month.
Ten thousand gallons, and that did.
What are we losing a month?
Well, then, I would have to have the maintenance report in front of me, but it's been discussed at the past couple.
Do you have an idea how much we're losing a month in water being pumped out and what's going out?
About four gallons to every one goes to homes.
So every one that goes in, we have four extra.
So we're losing a lot of water.
A lot of it. We're trying to get on top of it, we're working with.
Finding leaks.
Get some equipment in here.
Did you check with Herman and see if he's contacted Lewiston to see if they can come out with the correlator and help, or if we can start isolating block by block?
I do know that he said he's been following up with him, he told me last week, trying to reach him, but again, it's where you get, you know, a message machine and maybe the message to call back.
He's just going to have to stay on it.
Yeah, and he is, and I'm encouraging that.
Yeah. That's probably why we had to replace a pump.
Possible, other than the age factor.
And it's warranted.
Yeah.
Hey, Gary. Little big fire. Does he, does he have last month?
May report.
Wasn't that down there last month? Or this month?
Well, we, it's already been talked about, the fire at the saddle coast, so I didn't bring it back up.
No, you think we brought the council meeting in?
We have a fire in town.
Just that one.
Oh, that little one?
Yeah.
No, for other fathers.
But, and we have gotten our flashlights that we were authorized to give, so those have been disseminated out in the fire department, and people have been signing for the, for that use of that. I can truthfully say, unfortunately, it wasn't for a fire, but one of the firefighters had a flashlight used on this, the fatality crash down here, and they worked very, very well. That was one of our brightest lights.
Is that those helmet lights?
Yes. We have, we have those disseminated out, I think, Bill, you weren't there, but I have yours on the office, you'll need to sign for it. You, you gotta sign twice.
You gotta sign, okay, just twice.
Other than that, fire wise, I do, well, Norina and I talked about the batteries today and the other day, and told her what kind and where I have bought them in the past, but if it's all right with the council, the cul-de-sac put this one in, it would like to pay you back on the, on the buy, and we'll just pay you guys for the six batteries that we used, so if that's a all right deal.
Sounds, I'm, anything else? I'd like to make comments, and so we never had so many people here, this is our community, and we really need more volunteer fire people. We were stretched. We were exhausted, and if county came in and helped, because we got their truck here, they help us, we help them in the immediate areas, so if you know anybody, any neighbor who's younger than my age, please have and get a hold of Gary or City Hall and Norine has an application, we really could, if we can get ten people together, we do this certified training, we haven't been able to do because we haven't had enough people.
Because it requires ten people for the training, and then, of course, I'd make our money go a little farther than that.
Right, yeah.
Also, Winchester Volunteer Fire Department contacted me and said that if we ever have another fire like that, and it is my fault. That night, we were busy, we were stretched, everybody was doing ten things at one time, but they said that they'd be more than happy to come down and assist us. I have nothing else, come with manpower. They probably can't bring their truck out of their areas. So there again, our neighbors, and Lockwood was the same way, our neighbors said that they would be more than happy to, to help. Unfortunately, we don't have to have that again. But again, just to reiterate, I know I've been here, but and I've said it several times, but kudos to our fire department, our firefighters, they did one heck of a job for a long, long time.
And I don't think we had that local response as community response. We may have lost the bar in our library, so think about that and tell your neighbors, we can work together and make this thing happen.
So it's on your shoulders now, because it's not going to be just Gary remembering, that the other local communities will come help.
Yep. You gotta remember, I'm getting older, and.
That's at least him.
I think, I think I got it booked, no. But anyway, yes, that's something that I, I never thought of that night, or the following days that you guys spent there. And again, I take the responsibility for that, but there again, these people have come to us after that and said, hey, don't be afraid to give us a call. So that being said, I think that's something we should look at. Maybe get a, you know, I don't even know if we need to have a mutual aid agreement with them or not, they're, they're just, they're just like us, they're small volunteer groups. Handshakes seem to work just as well, yes, everybody says need to have mutual aid agreement, but there again, that'd be up to the, for the council to make that decision.
Now, one of our volunteers goes up there, they're covered by our insurance.
Under mutually.
Under mutually.
Same thing, they come down, they're covered by their.
We should have some sort of piece of paint.
Look, Gary, we can do that, but I just, just by bringing that up. Again, thank you all for the help, and hope we don't have another one for a while. I'm willing, you guys have a job, Gary, thank you.
Please rush her. We don't have a sheriff's report.
Do we have a sheriff in the room?
Don't see one.
I'll do it.
I, I did want to share that Sheriff John Hildebrand did call me about in the middle of March, kind of after our last meeting, and said, expressed that they have an interest, they want to be at our city council meetings, and they feel that they've neglected to be there, and he wanted to know the date of this one so that someone would be here. And I'm sure something came up that they're working instead of being here.
I notice they are patrolling a lot more than they did.
Yeah, they're in town a lot, so is tribal.
Well, move on to unfinished business, update and additional discussion of Foxletton or Trailer Court.
Anybody here from there?
I can report that our building inspector, Jim, went up to the trailer court, he had the pictures that Rick had left last month, and he checked the area, measured, and said that what Rick had been showing you, that he wants to put in, that there is enough room on each side per code to put that in.
We still can't do that until we resolve the rest of it, though, Bill.
Well, Rick has, knows that he has to get the other ones out before it can even come in, but he's getting an okay by the building inspector for the size for the spot that he has.
Well, nothing's going to be done until he gets out the other ones.
Oh, that's still there, huh? We just have to.
Still be about.
Yeah, can we carry, just carry it over till next month?
That's, was my understanding, that it stays here until everything's resolved, until it's resolved.
So, closed. Exterior junk on two oh three fourth street, order for city property deadline for fifteen fourteen.
Okay, the orders that were approved and signed at the last council meeting were posted on the door at two oh three fourth street, per instructions from our city attorney, Ed Lettnecker, and he also said that he would, I sent him a copy, and he was going to serve the owner where they were located. And I talked to him before this meeting, and he thought that the mayor should share the response that we had after those were posted. What's her name, Robin?
Robin's back in the nursing home now.
Wanda.
Or Wanda.
Yeah.
Robin's his sister.
Right, and I think we discussed that she came by and talked to you about getting an extension of time for them because they were not home.
She was inquiring about.
Inquiring, and you told her to come see me at City Hall?
I told her to come see you and get the latest on it.
And I want to report that she never came down to City Hall, I haven't met with her, so.
Tomorrow's the deadline for art.
I was just going to ask.
On art, on ours.
Now, what our city attorney recommends is that there's really nothing we can do tonight because the deadline's tomorrow, they have till tomorrow, so there's nothing really to follow up tonight, keep it on the agenda. He would like someone to go out late Tuesday afternoon, take pictures of the ride away, so I'll have Herman or Jason take those pictures, and the city property to document the condition of what it's like after the end of the order, and.
So we can't go ahead and say if it hasn't been done, the people that are interested in doing it?
What he, what we need, okay, and the people that are interested, he wants to do a letter to them that asks them to make a proposal, and expressing their understanding that there'll be a little agreement regarding the work to be done, and the council then will consider the proposals at its next meeting, so.
So it'll be another one?
So it's kind of another step, but. But he feels this is important legally to do the next step.
He's in State Hospital North right now. And she was, went back into the nursing home.
Yeah.
That makes a legal problem too, on ownership of whatever you pick up. Except for one.
But not on the city part.
On sale.
Right.
Does your camera, when you take pictures, show the date and time on it?
I think so, the city camera that they use.
Okay, well, that's all we can do.
Who's gonna do the cleanup, is that?
We've, we've had.
There was two or three others.
That have expressed interest.
Oh, really?
And so they will, they will be getting letters to submit their proposals, and then that'll be brought to the next meeting. And I'll work closely with.
I drove back there, it's gonna be a horrendous job.
They can get rid of some of the scraps, but I mean, there's gonna be some fees for getting all the.
So I'll work with the city attorney on the letter to the people expressing interest and on the agreement that he's gonna want them to sign.
So that'll be on your agenda for next month?
That would.
Business A and B.
Yes.
Dust abatement decision reviewed.
Can I ask a question before you say something? Curious, how many people like their dust debating?
I've heard a lot.
How many don't like it? We were questioning last, some people said they didn't want it. And so we thought, well, maybe some people didn't like it because they tracked it into their homes because they walked through a puddle on the day it was poured or something. So basically, it's pretty deal.
Might have something to do with the application.
Yeah. Yeah, could be. Well, I'll get your input on that later, I guess.
Yeah, I'll give the quotes, and then maybe citizens can give some of their comments since they're here at the meeting about the dust abatement.
I'm sorry, I just thought.
Oh, that's okay. Well, it looks like from the show of hands, you're correct, and that we have some people for comments. I was asked to get a revised quote from the company that we have used for the past two years. And there, and maybe longer, but I know at least going back two years. And the revised quote was to not do the dust abatement along the strips of Main Street where people park on the gravel there. And that reduced the quote a bit, but it's still $5,862.50.
They had to reduce it anything.
Yeah, maybe I think about 200 bucks it came off. So I contacted Limon Dust Control Road Treatment. And I got a quote from them for 71 cents per gallon, a 6,000 gallon minimum. And what we put on before was about 6,450. And so that's looking at more like 4,500. But it kinda, again, it, the cost is going, they can give us a quote, but the cost is gonna be how much they apply per gallon. And then the last quote I got was from Atlas, and. And theirs was the highest quote. So it was 36 tons delivered, $170 per ton at $6,120 for Atlas.
Oh, it's 5,970, so it's 100.
Hundred and, almost 200.
Same stuff.
But who knows how much the people didn't put it on, or actually put on, they don't put too much on, or charging us for whatever. That's why it'd be nice to have those that come in and say, okay, this would cost you such, such dollars for having it go through the streets. Say, would it put this?
Would they do that?
I suggested that to Limon, and they wanted to know what was used before to put the quote in rather than to come out first.
We're running out of time.
Yeah, that's what we are.
I'd like to have a little more control on that. Russ made a point there, is we've had times they came in when it was raining and all washed away. Because that's the day they decided to do it. One day they did it, the day before it should bang.
I don't necessarily have to do it before she banged it either, really.
Well, it depends on dusty it is.
Yeah, my name's Lyle Green, I live on 105 Bull Pine Drive. And that little hill right there is the worst spot for dust. I mean, you can put gravel on it until your eyes turn green, and it's not gonna stay because people fly up that road. Now, I know that there is a deal in where they want to lower that speed limit to 15, but I don't think that's gonna help because people are still gonna fly up that road. And the way that the wind blows west to east, I get covered in dust. I mean, it's terrible. And there is so much more traffic up there than there was when I first moved in. In fact, when I first moved in, I was told before I bought the property, those roads were gonna be paved. Well, that went by the wayside, and now I hear we're gonna have a problem even just getting dust control on it.
Well, we were, some people didn't like it, so. At the time, we had a small meeting, there was a panel that didn't want it.
Yeah, the road on Bull Pine Drive, we don't actually walk ever out into the road. So, you know, it doesn't ever bother us as far as tracking it around or anything. And yeah, when they do put it on, I seen that guy, I mean, he had his valves wide open, and he went down that road, and then he backed all the way back up, and then wide open, he went down again. I mean, I, as far as I'm concerned, he went one time too many.
I think we better get ahold of our sheriff to make sure he gets a couple of good tickets.
Because, I mean, it was so heavy, that second time he put it on, it just ran off the sides of the road and down.
Oh, you mean the, that's a jump in the right.
What's the sheriff got to do with it?
No, no, the dust control.
I think one of those people driving down there would make you mad.
No, I just think the second time he put it on, he should have never done that.
That's what I'm saying, but I think you have to actually apply it.
How can we?
Know what really should be applied.
I think I'll listen, maybe you two could get with the city people and work out the details of what's been wrong so that we do it right this time.
Yeah, I talked with Mike a little bit this afternoon, and they have, they've put that dust stuff on there, and the next day it's pouring down rain, it's gone. And they put that dust on there, and there's no gravel.
I don't think it needs to be done in June.
I think we were just trying to get it done before.
Should bang.
Part of the spring cleanup.
All of this is downtown, there's the dust downtown.
And downtown doesn't.
I mean, there is, I guess, a little bit, but when you put that in front of like the bar and the sidewalk in the park.
It just tracks.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah. So you're saying it's too early, June is too early?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, so then we're not ready.
Well, last year, last year they put it on, and it's poured. Washed it totally away, then come back and do it.
What would you consider a good time?
Me personally, I would do it first of July.
In July.
First of July would be.
But should bang days is.
Do you folks live there too?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys are all saying later in the year.
We should do the dust control after Shabang.
Like the first part of July.
That's what we need to know. We don't know. We're just going on what has been done in the past and the time schedule.
And then they also. If they're gonna put gravel down, they need to put the gravel down before they put the dust control on. Because I've seen that happen before, too.
Yeah, the coordination needs to be there.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm glad we got in.
Thank you. Anyone else in another area of town? We've heard from up above, anyone on Cul-de-sac, St. Rose Pier?
I'll do Cul-de-sac Avenue. That's why I'm there, and it's the same thing. I don't want it there until after July.
It serves no purpose. Because those people drive down the gravel, they'll stay on pavement. Right in front of the pop-up shredding.
Yeah, they are. A lot of dust there.
The street's not wide enough. The gra, and anybody that, everybody goes down, they're stirring up dust.
Okay, so now, am I hearing you correctly in this full room, that you're saying that they do need it on Main Street? If they do it, because we were hearing last month, don't do on the sides of Main Street?
They could do maybe part of Main Street. Like where you said, right in front of the shredding. Run a little strip across there, you know?
Yeah, you don't have to do the pavement, obviously. So, I like the idea is we make it somewhere in the gym, and watch if there's a storm coming in, we tell them we don't want it. If there's a storm.
Talk to the contractor.
Work it out, where we're sorry.
I thought it had to be wet to put it down.
It's supposed to soak in.
Yeah, it soaks into the ground, but like I was saying, on Bull Pine Drive, when there's no gravel on it, that's, that's like a pavement, but it's dust. And then it just runs right off, it doesn't soak in.
So maintenance has to do the job first before it's put the dust control down.
Oh, Boyer. We get our gravel from Boyer. And so we have to coordinate the delivery of the gravel.
Okay, so we're gonna hold off, we'll hold off on the, on the.
And the $4,500 estimate, that's the same stuff?
I will double check with them, because I told them the two products. He gave me a lower quote on a product that is, like comes from trees.
That's what we've been using, trees.
No, we've been using magnesium chloride.
Yeah, that's terrible stuff.
And we switched to the magnesium chloride because the city hall got so many complaints when the stuff that comes from trees was used. Now, I don't know, because I, you know, I'm just inheriting all this, okay? But maintenance did tell me that there were more complaints about the tree stuff. But if we used it, it was a lower quote. By, but then again, we're probably talking $120 lower quote. But it's still lower, it's getting closer to four grand than six grand.
Which one worked best up there? Could you tell the difference between the sap and the?
Couldn't really tell.
Could you tell that you?
The magnesium chloride that's put on, that's, it's pretty corrosive stuff, really. I mean, if you have a boat, aluminum boat, you got mag wheels, you get that stuff on there, if you don't wash it off, it's gonna ruin it.
We heard that last month about people in their cars.
So we're dinged if we do and danged if we don't. Well.
Raise taxes and pay everything.
Somebody knows how to write a grant. That's what we really need, is a grant.
I was told a long time ago that the Native American lived on that road, you could get it paved.
Probably.
I was told by the city clerk. When I first moved out here, Sue. She told me that.
Oh, Sue did?
Yes. She said, if you, if a Native American lived up there, you could get that road paved.
That hill up there, the pot roast a little bit, both are just too.
How much is that permit? Yeah, if that was paved, it'd be a slick son of a gun, but.
Yeah.
That's another one, you have, heck if you do and heck if you don't.
There's three spots in town where we have paving money. Those are two there, and the ones over there by Pier Lakes. Those are the worst in town.
Okay, if you're interested on the information about the application from trees, I have.
Oh, that's what's the 4,500, that's why it was cheaper?
It's, no, that was the magnesium, that was the chloride. But he was promoting, my contact at Limon, the products made from tree because there's no chemicals, no solvents, no chlorides, no petroleum, no corrosion, no sulfates, no VOCs. It's easily cleaned up with soap and water.
What were they complaining about, then, you think?
In the past, I don't know.
Doesn't work.
We used to get terrible stuff.
And it says.
Tree stuff is terrible.
Well, I don't understand what goes on there.
It works good, it packs.
Yeah, it can. Stabilizes roads, making them water resistant and reducing mud and chuck holes. It can be applied to dry road beds, no need for water trucks. Reduces the need for frequent blading. One application only lasts the summer season. It's non-corrosive, like the other dust suppressants, which is magnesium chloride that we've been using the past few years.
Doesn't that magnesium chloride, after a while, doesn't it require moisture? It takes the moisture? Because if, because I've noticed if you have a dew, a heavy dew, then the oil, or then the dust stuff is better. But if it's dry and in the hot winter, and you don't get any dew or anything, it's really, it doesn't work. So I don't know if that has anything to do with it or not, but.
See, that's kinda why you're, than if you didn't do it anyway, because it's so hot and so dry to begin with through the dust season of summer that, what do you do? Take an hose out there in front of your house?
Exactly what we do. Is that exactly what we do?
They've got schedules.
I've set a sprinkler out there before because it's so, it's so dusty. And one of those fingers was five, we get them out of the tree box.
Yeah, and there's a lot of those.
Do we want magnesium or sap?
We have cheaper going sap.
And maybe, you know, keep record of it, see what the complaints are after.
We already know.
Neither is a good.
The only thing with the sap, like, until it dries, it'll get sticky.
That might have been the complaints.
That was the complaint. I didn't want to hear it.
But once it dries on the road, it does hold it. They use them on logging roads all the time. And it just, until the big rain starts in the fall, it's just like driving on pavement.
Where I live on Bull Pine Drive, as the hill comes down, every time it rains, or anytime he puts that stuff on so heavy, it doesn't just stay on the road surface, it runs right down my driveway into my, right where we park our car, puddles up on the side of the shop. It's, I gotta deal with, can't add more water now, it's so wet, it won't soak in. You have water, just build a puddle until it ground dries up. So kinda got a drainage problem for when he starts, when he applies it, he applies a lot, a lot more than.
Is any way that can be cut back to where it tells the other one?
There's no barrel pit on the other side for the water either, or a, or a culvert under the uphill driveways, or it's kind of a. Those culverts that are on that road, they ain't even being used anyway. The water just runs right down the road.
Yeah. And that problem over my mind.
Then it gets right down there by the main road, and it just goes right across Bull Pine Drive, and then out into the road. You know, there's no drainage, it's a fort to go down underneath.
I'll talk to you about that culvert idea. I think we should try the sap. And this time, and see if everybody gives us input, more the better.
Yeah, if he gets it going, and it's running off the sides of the road, maybe you should let it set and go put another cone on, and come back by that spot later after it has it.
Yeah, we'll work with them this time. That's great. Should we? Should we try the new company and get them to follow our rules? Oh, sorry.
Table is, till the next meeting, we'll look into it, and we'll move on.
I'll get some further information then about scheduling and applying, and report back.
Have that bound with application.
Yeah, but it looks like the council is leaning towards investigating the sap from Limon. And I'll narrow my, my search to that.
So if we do sap this year, will you guys let us know?
Give us a report back.
Because I don't live up there, so I can't. Yeah, and, but you're saying July, not.
Yeah, right around the first.
First part of July.
Yeah, and that's what we need. We need you to come tell us what you want. Yeah, July.
Change to, to process for collecting past due accounts.
I included in your packets.
Some water and sewer.
Our utility billing procedure, so that you could see what our ordinance says about the delinquent payment notice, the disconnection of service. And actually, the ordinance actually gives a little less time than what city clerks have given people with a past due to come in and pay that payment. It states here five days. We usually give them seven, a bit more depending on the mailing of the bills.
I'd like to move that to the end of the meeting, I guess.
Sounds good. Or table it?
I'd table it, yeah.
Thank you.
I think we have enough today. And the same way with LED, because Herman's not here about them.
No.
Table the lights. Herman's back with the figures. Lost gain sewer water lines for second residents. Or nibs, whichever. Or nims, whichever.
John's going to speak for me.
Well, I got pictures here of what we've done. That's sewer.
These are coming off of a separate line, not tight-piped into your original.
These are tied into my line.
So we're gonna have two residences off of one system?
Yeah, it says in ordinance, I can't do that.
And can you tell that?
The inspector said, yeah.
But our city ordinance says you can do that?
Yes.
Can you give me the ordinance?
I didn't see that, because you can't have two houses...
I thought we were talking last month, so you can't have...
You can't have two houses run off of one water sewer.
Mike Crowe told us there is another sewer hookup down there.
Yeah, you can't, you can't pack this one in.
Well, that's not where we're, we got another.
Okay, that's just where they're running, where the trailer, so, okay, this is where they're tying into the front.
If that was the case, everybody would...
Depends on how far manhole it weighs.
Well, I thought you would just make two trailers into one.
Can't do that.
Can't do that either.
The building inspector, since the last meeting, went out and looked, and the two trailers would have to be ten foot apart, so they couldn't make it like one big double-wide. And so...
Start track there, and continue to there. The inspector said, you don't know why we're doing all memory, said everything was good, yeah.
All the foundation, yeah, because that one has some requirement, was the foundation. Miss Spoke, they could put them side by side, but since the one had a foundation, they'd have to put a foundation for the other one, have them side by side.
Not necessarily, the inspectors, that whole trailer court's made up of this. Every one of those trailers went into one line down the middle. So what's the difference if there's one more? The inspector thinks it's, as long as it drains properly and it's downhill...
This doesn't, this doesn't really do with city ordinance. From here to there.
That's city ordinance.
There's about two and a half foot drop. That's city ordinance, right there's your city ordinance number.
Two and a half foot drop, probably how many feet?
Four, roughly fifty feet.
It's forty feet.
And that's in the same ordinance, it says you can connect a sewer to another residence?
I can take out a section of my pipe and insert a Y.
Now, was that pipe pressure tested before you discovered?
Uh, not, the ordinance has got the pressure tested, inspected by licensed, blah. It says I always gotta be inspected by, is water commissioner, water superintendent, or city engineer.
Did any of those inspected?
We all have one.
No, I haven't.
Yes, we do. Anyway, if you would come, as the ordinance say, if you're going to be doing something with your sewer and water, you come to City Hall, let us know. You would need to go to the Nesperse County Plumbing Bureau, and they handle the inspections for what you're doing on your property. Then you need to get a permit from them, and they handle the inspections. The building inspector told me that he did not tell you that he could, that you could do a Y from the sewer. He said that must have been a misunderstanding. His understanding was you were digging up the property to see if there was another line on the property.
No, that's all we explained.
Is Dell's licensed to inspect that?
I'm not sure, but I do know I've talked to the Nesperse County Plumbing Inspector, and he says he handles all landowners' properties, they get permits, and he inspects it.
Do you have a permit from Nesperse County?
Everybody told us we gotta get Nesperse County to get a permit, and we was talking about all this.
Well, no, you were told that you weren't to put it in, you had to come to City Hall.
No, nobody said not to put it in.
Yeah, we did.
Right here, you asked for the copy of the ordinance, and here for water, you're working on sewer, but water's next. No person whose premises are supplied with city water shall furnish water to additional persons or premises. You have to have a separate water line, and indeed, a separate sewer line.
But, your sewer ordinance says I can take out a section of my pipe and insert a Y.
But it doesn't say for a residence.
You can't do it with the Y.
But it doesn't say for a residence.
You can't do it with the water, but I can do it with the sewer. You can't, here's one off the water, we gotta go off the sewer for the sewer.
But that doesn't state to a residence, to another residence on your property, does it?
Remove the joint of sewer pipe and insert a Y and...
And securely cement it before making connection there where, to make sure it's securely cemented, you have to do a pressure check. So you could tap both ends, if you get the inspector to say it doesn't leak, then you probably okay it, then if he okay's the Y, but the question is, is, I don't know how much that trailer court is up to snuff. It was put in there a long time ago.
Yeah, I wouldn't trust anything Mike Crowe said, just me personally.
No, I do know there was two trailers on my three lots. I do know that, because I was surveying right here for ninety-six. I showed you two trailers.
That was ninety-six.
But it still shows two trailers on them three lots. So if the sewer from one trailer doesn't run into my sewer, there's gotta be another sewer hookup on my three lots.
You accept that? Well, you're on your property, so you'd have to figure out what it is.
So that's what Mike has sold you guys, he doesn't just own it all, you own those now?
Yeah, I am, I'm buying them three lots.
And then, instead of that, you're not putting the two trailers together, you take one residence, so you...
We decided against that, and building inspector said it'd be better just to put them in there separate.
So you'll have two different families.
Yeah.
Because less, you don't have to put the foundations in and all the work to open them up.
To keep it all real property, I'd have to pour a foundation in there, set their trailer on a foundation, the same as mine.
If you want it to be a real property.
Yeah.
But still, you have to, each one is a separate, separate water and sewer.
Yeah.
You might be able to pipe it in, but you still have to...
This could not be resurfaced here, this has to be worked out with the inspector.
It has to be worked out with the county, the county and the inspector.
And the county is the inspector, yeah, the county inspector. Because our building inspector doesn't do this, this type of work.
Yeah.
And I just wanna share, I think if you read the notes, that I misquoted the cost for putting in sewer and water at the last meeting, because in my training, I misunderstood. And I admit my error, I apologize. But for putting in the sewer and the water, it is the cost of the materials and the labor times ten percent per our ordinance, and that averages between two thousand two hundred to two thousand five hundred, depending on the labor, the labor time. And we got updated quotes from Ferguson for the water meter and the parts to do that, so it's about half.
But if there was two of them, they're already on these three lots, were they just kept, I mean, they have to be somewhere.
Somebody just had to find them.
One of the water meters on our, we don't have a separate water meter. He said there's just one water meter there for our property, but there is another sewer hookup. And there's six meters of our property, which I think is on our property, I'm not sure if it's on our property or city property. And they...
What type of meters?
One of them is Herman's.
Yeah, water meters for the homes.
So you said there were other sewer hookups, why are you tying into the one for the system?
Well, we didn't know that when we started.
So then if you tied into those, I imagine that makes it a little more grandfellow. I'm not sure, you gotta work with the inspector, so that's...
Still having to pay for two separate water sewer hookups, there's no way around that.
Well, that's what we said, we hooked up together, we still pay separately.
Yeah, you can still send a separate bill.
I think I'd ask the county before you, if anything. If it were me.
But the city doesn't, the billing system isn't set up for that, and the ordinance do not allow for it.
I don't have answers.
I don't have answers.
I know they'd have trouble down there, but, because that's what he was trying to run more than shit down there. And so they made it just everybody have one.
A separate one. And each of his places have, each of his places have a separate one.
Yeah, but those lots are only twenty-five feet wide, right?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, because I have five lots, and they're only, I thought they were twenty-five.
You have one house on five lots.
Oh, yeah, I could have built the whole thing. But, yeah, those lots aren't, I don't know how many you have, what you...
The lots down there front are twenty-four by hundred, lots out back are twenty-four by nine.
Yeah.
Because there's a fifteen-foot easement in between the two rows of trailers.
So... I would say you have to check that, if you get it on there, get it on there, you have to check. Then it turns out you can't do it, or did it wrong, then you have to check it all up and do it again.
Well, I know it's not wrong, because I've been doing this all over my ten years.
If it were me, I'd have to check.
Here, in Idaho?
Back east.
Yeah, but this...
I mean, there's no difference in burying a water line and sewer line, it's all done the same.
Yeah, but you don't know what, the code is what's different, you know, what they're gonna, it has to be certain, you know, certain...
Roth or certain depth or...
They last than a quarter inch per foot.
I don't know.
And they have to...
Okay, I'm just saying, I don't know.
I would assume they have to inspect that. If you installed that, that sewer, we just did a house for my father-in-law, they had to inspect that before we did even with it.
Right.
They inspect, they go in there, they measure it, they measure the slope, they measure, they'll take the total distance, and they'll take your one inch per whatever it is, five feet, ten feet, whatever it is. And then they'll measure and make sure you have it right, you have to have it inspected.
Did you do a pressure check too?
Yes.
And that's all to protect the infrastructure of our city's water and sewer system.
And water table, because if that's, you gotta leak underground once you bury it, one of those joints, which I did one in the hotel, I didn't put glue on it, it leaked. It was fun crawling through that attic and getting fixing it, but it was caught because of the pressure check. And you gotta do the same under there.
And I was inside though.
You were in what?
I said you was inside the motel though.
It still runs downhill.
Any light inside, it has to be pressure tested.
What was under the back door?
All of it was tested outside in the house, and it had to be tested by the county.
Every sewer line has to be tested to where it enters the sewer.
That's right.
So that's really not that difficult, if you find the right people to just make sure you do it. You glue up again, you pass it, what you got buried, you may not have to dig up again if you beat the slope, but you got it.
We all have a permit, you're being...
Yeah, it's really not that difficult.
So we won't inspect it if you have a permit, so... I guess we table that till next one, then, huh?
Well, they're gonna have to call the county.
Yeah.
And see what the county, if they're gonna require...
I know, I called health department, and they said I ain't never heard of having inspected on some...
Health department doesn't have anything to do with...
The health department sent me to the plumbing bureau.
Yeah, health department doesn't do with inspectors.
They do, they don't?
They don't. They'll tell you where to go.
Brian, you know that...
Yeah, the building mechanic said I got to call him, bloody knows.
Do I know, no, I don't know. You have to state that. Yeah, I don't state, I'm sorry about that. Well, sounds like you know enough to get them a couple of guidelines, if you get them in the right directions, that you went through.
We went through it.
Yeah, so get a hold of whoever has done it.
What do we need to do on the water?
Well, are you just tapping into, or are you...
They're gonna work with me.
We're gonna get a meter. You go into the new meter.
Yeah, we're gonna get a new meter.
We'll have to schedule that, maintenance, maintenance has to be involved with that one, so...
You need to...
Well, we just thought we could go ahead and do what's on our property. And now we've been told other stuff, so...
You can dig whatever you want for your own.
I mean, lay our line on our property.
You can dig whatever you want for your own.
You just can't lay the line for the meter, trailer.
But it needs, you know, be inspected, and shown that it was inspected. And then you need to come to City Hall to apply to get the hookup to the system, the water hookup and sewer, and pay the estimated amount at that time, and then they'll schedule the work.
No, he will be cutting out and inspecting that.
Say again, I didn't hear that?
That...
He's gonna inspect the water line.
Well, if it leaks, then you bait the extra water, I guess.
Yeah, if it leaks off of your side, then...
On our side.
I don't think it needs inspecting on their side.
She just said it needed to be inspected.
It needs inspected.
Everything, the whole system will be inspected.
I get that when they do the tour.
Yes.
Still don't bury it.
Well, it's already partially buried, I mean, there's still enough buried where you see it's all is done.
Yeah, okay.
Depending on the inspector, they'll say, they'll want to know the total distance of the house, how it's angled.
And water line. Some of them write about the water line. That's real simple for the...
Bury the water line.
Yeah.
Okay, so we resolved that, best we could.
Wish you'd probably done maintenance inspection just for...
Yeah.
Well, you can give him the address or phone number of the inspector.
Okay.
And he can talk to them about it.
You'll go with him.
These ordinance has been here long before we have, and all we got is ordinance to go by.
I don't know, I put my water line in, nobody come and inspected it. My sewer line, when they put the sewer in, nobody come and inspected it. It's on your property, they don't care if the turds flow that way or not.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm doing all the work on my own property, I thought on their statewide needs to be inspected.
I'm just saying.
When they put the sewer line in, everybody had to hook up, there wasn't nobody inspecting the sewer.
How long ago was that, Mike?
Well, whenever they put the sewer line in.
Twenty-five?
Yeah, they got this environmental stuff that they're all fussed about, in our little sewer lagoon down there, none of that stuff goes in.
The easiest way to do it, you gotta just call the county, they'll tell you what you have to do, what you're gonna say. It's simple, just call the county, they'll tell you what you need to do. And if you're off the hook, I'm not having to do anything, bury it. But I would have, I would definitely call them first. I get the letter behind it.
Yeah, make sure you know who you're talking to, and make sure if you, if they tell you to go ahead and bury it, get it in writing. Cover your, cover yourself.
I got a warehouse one day this week, and one time I'm gonna be in, I wanna get it in writing.
Yeah, cover yourself.
I mean, I try to get everything in writing.
So we have to wait before we bury the rest of the water line?
I would wait till he goes down to the county and talks to them, and see what they tell him.
Okay.
Because if you guys get it all done, and it's not what they want, then they're gonna make you come out and redo it. And you don't wanna do it twice, you don't wanna dig that ground up twice.
And that would be, I'm bad second time. It's all already loosened up.
Well, I asked because you guys just wanna table it till next meeting, and then we're talking about whether they're trying to like run the first two minutes.
We'll never make it.
You'll know your information since you called.
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll get that solved.
And then come to City Hall and pay the money for the water sewer hookup.
And they, we had all the words about that. You may not have water for the first week, but you might not have electricity the first week either.
Oh, see, so Chuck already knows you may not have electricity, you can't get a Vista to the contract.
Well, we got a light pole.
So we have to get the stuff to put it in, and then call them and then come and do it.
A light pole?
Yeah.
When I did mine, I got the pole, and Dave from Dell's Electric came out and took mine up. That, I do remember that, I don't remember, I know I had to have the sewer line inspected and stuff like that, but I don't, it was done, so I don't know. I was there when Dave did the power pole and stuff, it's in the back of the shop. So, I know Dell's can do that part, so you don't have to have, I don't think you have to have a Vista. Well, you might, because you might have to come, have to come and run a line.
Run the line to the meter.
From the main line to your pole.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on. Anyone need a break?
I don't think so.
Citizens comments or questions?
Those two ladies have left.
Thank you, go ahead and in.
What were they here for?
I don't know.
Dest. Destabate, are they for destabate?
Okay.
Oh, that's great.
So there was three, five of them, for destabate? Four, five, yeah.
Good feedback on that dust thing, I'm glad we got it.
I agree, maybe more than that.
Go to Eric.
Eric?
Yeah, I just bought a new motorcycle and I hate to wash that thing every half hour. Every time the bar goes by. Hi, Eric.
Etheridge, Eric Etheridge.
Eric?
Hi, I'm Eric, I'm a senior at Colsec, and part of being a senior is to complete a senior project. And my proposal was to repaint the old playground and basketball court.
What did you mean by that, the girl down there, I mean?
Basketball court, I was gonna, you know, brush off, power wash it and repaint the lines, you know, so you can see the three point, and repaint the siding, make it all green and pretty even. Cause I don't know if any of you have been down there lately, but it's had, seen better days.
Oh, it used to have something in the middle, I know you're planning.
The United States on it.
Oh, right.
I was hoping to do that too, but I'm not very artistic, I'd be a lot of help for that. But, yeah, I'm here today to ask for permission to paint on it, and I would also like the help from the maintenance crew. Cause their experiences with painting and all the craftsman type stuff.
Probably get you the right rollers and stuff, do we need a fire truck or something, what's the water situation?
That's, that's one of the biggest ones, I have a power washer on the paint, like, I just need, you know, help.
When do we get our pressure truck down there, it's got, it doesn't have really great pressure, but it probably.
Oh, the fire truck.
The short, small one, yeah.
If you're willing to give a fire truck.
No, no, the cheaper it was given.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, we'll give you one when you turn eighteen, become a volunteer fighter.
He's a senior.
I wasn't saying my team, so.
Whoops.
Let it blow you one.
So are you doing the painting, you need money for the paint too?
I don't know, if I have a lack of it, I just need permission from the maintenance crew, I guess.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll move you later.
Okay, Mike is so moved. I'll second it.
You beat me to the second.
I waited.
I liked it too.
Motion carried, thank you, Mike.
Eric.
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 Thank you.
Took care of that, so you don't have to worry about another senior project to do it up.
If we could, if we can figure out the water thing when it works out in a day, just kinda coordinate with city hall, maybe we can find a water truck or something to hose it on. Do we have a hydrant over there?
Yeah.
I don't care if that works.
Right there at the, right there's the driveway that goes down in, isn't it, right there by the driveway?
It's by the pool, we're about halfway in.
I don't know, Eric, where's the fire hydrant at?
Fire, I, a water.
There's one of those nozzles.
Oh, water, water hydrant, okay, okay, water, yeah.
Is there like one to come down through the hydrant?
No, there's one just down the road, it's Main Street.
Maybe this one's gonna be the closest.
No way?
I thought there was one.
That's a long way away, there's gotta be one up there somewhere.
Cause there's a school.
I think it's Earl Hunt's place.
I think it's out the corner of Colsec Avenue. I think it's out the corner of Colsec Avenue and the bridge.
I will figure it out.
I got one in front of our place. It's still a long. I think it's right there on top of the bridge.
Two hundred yards with a fire hose just to, there's gotta be a spigot somewhere.
Eric said there is a spigot in there, there's a, a fairy valve.
Well, see, there you go.
Lots of times, yeah.
That's, that's.
Get the back end of it.
Sounds like great project, I'm excited.
Eric, do we have to give him a letter?
A letter?
Um, his request.
Do you need anything for school?
Yeah.
Or anything that you're gonna do this and that we approved it and stuff like that?
I'm sure, if he's favored, it says approved.
You said there's a frost free valve down there, but it doesn't work?
Correct.
So it just needs to be repaired?
Yeah, yeah, there was two, there was one by the tennis courts and that one, the tennis court one's been off for a long time, but.
The city has all the kind of that. But that one hasn't turned out.
To whom's attention would that letter go, is there someone in charge of senior projects at the school? And you are?
Caitlin Scott, C-A-I, T-L-I-N.
Okay, I'm, I'm slow tonight, C-A-I.
T-L-I-N.
And then Scott, spelled as it sounds with two Ts, okay, great, good, great, did you ever find out the history about?
Well, I have to go into the library.
Yeah, I've talked to some citizens who've been here a long time, and it's just like, does anyone know when those were put in?
Before my time.
Twenty years ago. And they were sixteen years and they were here, and I said, oh, I'm.
The tennis courts or the basketball, is that what you're asking?
The whole, yeah, that lower.
Mike, do you know when?
I don't remember.
You don't remember, well, you and Joanne are the two.
I don't like.
Do not just remember.
It's where the outlaws used to park their horses. Remember that.
Right.
She's in an awful close, she can.
Oh, she can probably hit me.
Okay, so you will get that to him?
Mm-hmm, yeah, work with the mayor to get the letter to the school, and then be in contact with me, cause the maintenance aren't here, but I'll talk to them, and we can coordinate on that.
He wants it done before he graduates, it'll hold him up from graduating.
What's the graduation thing?
Maintenance is gonna do that.
Has to be done.
We better get on it.
Yeah, it has to be done ASAP.
Watch the weather too.
What about fixing those faucets?
Yeah, we'll have to check with Herman, but the thing is, the kids go down there and turn them on.
There's locks in them.
Always the locks on them?
Yeah, you can put a lock on them, a frost free, there's a.
Oh yeah, there's a place.
I don't know, you just put mine in, I don't know, I just stood back and watched you do it.
Put a lock on it, put a padlock on it.
Put a camera up in the park, they just pull the camera into the box and the padlock and everything else?
Yeah, maybe it is.
Get that to your hands and then you can go to work. Thank you for your.
Permission.
Your idea to beautify the district city.
Make it three point line. I don't want you cheating in there, putting a house so you can drop trays either.
Must be tennis talk.
Yeah, no, no, basketball.
Now, all that.
Tennis is love.
Have we got that covered now?
Yes.
All right, let's move on.
Thank you.
Russ Bossart, request for lower speed limit on Bull Pine Drive.
That'd be me.
Russ? I'm Russ Bossart, and I live on Bull Pine Drive, and I.
That must be you or Doc.
I have a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign right in front, twenty feet up from the junction with.
That little red one that you have out there?
No, no, but it's actually a regular speed limit sign, I mean, it is twenty-five, and I know putting a fifteen up there isn't gonna slow anybody down probably. It seems like the people that actually live on the road as it goes up, they get blowed by, by everybody coming up the road. You live at the end of the road, that's when you're slowing down, so you don't get the dust, you know, so they don't care what they do on the way, they just, it's only two hundred yards up the hill to their house, they gotta do twenty-five plus. Since it's twenty-five, they're gonna try thirty, so, put a fifteen, maybe they'll drop to twenty, I don't know. I have no right to go out there and yell at them, and I flag some down and talk to them, but if it says twenty-five, you know, that's kinda fast for a little steep hill going up there. They don't do no good to yell at them if the law says they can do twenty-five, so.
But we have no enforcement. We can put the sign up there.
You know, we're paying the signs anyway, so remember we get a deal, the more signs we buy, last time we were doing that, we talked about that last time.
I've seen one over there on the street.
They had to be the same as the things, yeah.
They did have the same.
But still, we are working on signs and getting it ordered in.
Well, I don't see a problem with fifteen, I mean, if it looks, but we can enforce it, and I don't think it's gonna change the plan.
Could hurt, but yeah. They don't know if it's worth it, it takes them down, you know, I don't know, the highway going, the paved road going up, I can understand that, it's twenty-five. But when you turn that corner and all that gravel that's out there in the road is for people hitting that corner and, oh, I, or coming down the hill, and this kinda is doing that California ride right around the corner, they don't stop.
They do it there, they do it at Watson Street.
Yes, everyone.
Yeah, nobody stops at Watson Street.
I don't see a problem with it.
I put my little green man out with the little flag, but, but it really.
Surprised somebody hasn't ran over.
Well, I've got a lane on there, so I got a ball there.
I don't know, we have them along Cul-de-sac Avenue?
But can you put speed bumps on gravel roads?
How?
Yeah, yeah.
If it wasn't so hard, I'd have a few ditches dug.
They just do the divots.
Might deter the water running down the driveway.
That whole section probably goes in pure lane, so that'd be.
Between no dust, a bane of noise, they drive on it, you know, and still like.
That's a really bad curve, if we, could you put, say, sharp curves low, help, or do, if they live there, they know it.
They know.
I don't think the sign's really gonna do much, you know.
It's like Main Street.
It might work one time, and then the next time there.
You know, I have a suggestion, that you get the fifteen mile per hour speed limit, you get a hold of the sheriff's department, they've worked on this before, get that little machine up there, get a deputy up there, and you know the big times when the people are coming through, and you should know. And then put a police car up there, and they will offer.
They've been very good, because they've been sitting here until.
Combinations.
And they've been catching a lot of people speeding, either speeding coming into town, or speeding going out of town.
They catch them coming off of the hill.
They catch them coming off the hill.
Yeah, they come down there.
It works, honestly.
Yeah, it's worth a try, but like, say, yeah, once they get a sign up, that'll kinda give you a understanding.
Okay, well, I move that we drop the speed limit to fifteen miles an hour up there on Bull Pine, if we can do that, I don't know, can we do that?
So, um.
Is that within the city limits?
Yeah.
It's in the city limits, and unless, the signs say it's, the speed limit says it's twenty-five miles an hour unless otherwise posted, yeah.
And I do know that it doesn't look like our city has adopted the manual on uniform traffic control devices, on doing any changes with streets. It might be a good thing to adopt, said our city attorney, but I can, you know, query on that and.
Do that.
And see, and then check it out.
If we need to adopt that, and if we can drop the speed limit up there on Bull Pine.
Now, if the school zone, you always have wind chill in present, you'll see everywhere it says twenty, so that would, nothing else, that maybe, we might be allowed to do that, so. Dangerous curve or something, twenty. And so, blue rough road. And Russ, would you help me on that Destabate, I'll try to set some rules for our people, so we do it right.
So it'd be on Bull Pine Drive, coming on to it, and.
The one coming up the hill.
After Pandora Salute.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, I've been there a lot of years, and it just, every year there's more and more people, and then now they're more moving and moving in and moving out, you know, it just.
More moving.
Ain't residents anymore, they're kinda migrating, three a year. Oh yeah, I think different families moving up there, and then they have kids, so their kids are driving, and so we got just so much more traffic all the time. It's really gotten to be a lot more traffic.
So we'll see what we can do, no more of an X meeting.
I'll check.
Larry Payne needs regular cleanup of Watson Street Bridge and Bridge Intersection, safety issue.
He's not here.
That's funny, I saw.
I was looking forward to, yeah, that intersection is bad when his truck is driving, I mean, I don't know what he wants us to do, I didn't hear, maybe I went and gone to the meeting when they said, suggested about traffic, did you get that?
What?
On this thing, he said that what people had suggested that we do with the traffic, I mean, you have to pull out on Main Street.
A long way.
When his truck is parked there.
When they have all their vehicles parked there.
Yeah.
It was the letter with the pictures.
The maintenance on the.
I don't, I don't along with that.
But the traffic, you know.
Well, there was something in there that he said about that, and so I wondered what that was.
Most people are not stopping at the stop sign, and with the kids running around, someone is going to get hit, and people are just going too fast through the intersection, maybe a slower speed reduction sign is in order, there's the same subject there.
Stop sign is like way far back from, I haven't come down that way for a long time, but it's way back there, it's.
On the bridge?
You have to, yeah, you have to, it would seem you have to creep out.
Yeah, you have to come. They're double, they're double parking.
Yeah.
And it makes it really difficult, cause you can't.
You can't see around, so you do have to come to a complete stop, and then start going forward, so maybe it looks like you're running the sign, but to look both ways so that you can go.
But what he is saying about the leaves and stuff like that is, is a big agreement, because I was threatening to go up there and clean that up, but it's not just there. Wherever there's a drain, that Joanne has been here on the bridge cleaning and sweeping gravel and everything for years, and now that Watson is done, there's a drain there, but if it's full of leaves and garbage, then it's not gonna drain into the creek. Now, is there other drains on Cul-de-sac Avenue, Mike?
I think there's one down at the bottom.
Is out here by.
At the end.
And see, none of, none of, by your house.
There will always be.
It's across the street from your house?
Yeah.
Is there's a drain. Maintenance is not cleaning any of the streets in the fall when the leaves fall, and these drain fields get plugged up, they're not, they're not getting cleaned up at all, ever, and so, yeah, there's one by your house.
That's not true.
They do.
You've seen them.
I've seen them do it.
Yeah, have you seen them do it?
And they, after storms is usually when I've seen Joanne.
I've seen one that four-warder go up and down in front of my house, half a dozen times, that's not true.
And he is cleaning the drain.
In my neighborhood, they fill up twice a day. But in my neighborhood, they're.
At Larry's, another thing with at Larry's is cats allergic to the wasps and the bees, so the way those, those pi, those poles that come up, Herman knows that he's gotta keep them sprayed, because.
And we get, and we get by the, we purchase the spray, yeah.
Yeah, he does, I mean, I've talked to him before, we've gotta keep them sprayed, but the leaves where he's got pictures of them, yeah, they haven't been done, they may be getting done at your house.
They are at my house.
Or. Years and past, years and past, they haven't been done, because trick or treating time, I'm out and I'm moaning and groaning.
When we work out our job descriptions, we might, as a weekly task, one day a week, they check the drains, if it's raining or something.
Especially in the fall, especially in the fall, the leaves all come back.
When they come off, you can check it three times a day.
Yeah, I know.
It was in your notes about, in the grant to fix Main Street, that must have been, they were talking about.
There was, there was a citizen here at the last meeting.
Oh, that's, and so in my notes, because I made the copies, but the post-it note was on here, Larry Payne also stuck on a post-it note that says grant to fix Main Street, so at our last council meeting, we had people asking, can you get grants to fix Main Street, and now another citizen on Main Street's requesting that, so.
That'd be nice.
That would be great.
My girlfriend's saying get a grant, I can do that.
That was what, yeah.
I think I went to a young lady.
I don't know how to write grants, okay, I'll, we can hit that, shut me out.
Catherine, I think I might be able to write grants.
Pardon?
I think I might know a young lady that's excellent at writing grants.
Well, if, that was one way, that, at the last city council meeting, there was a young lady that said, get a grant to pave Main Street, I know nothing about writing grants, we need somebody that knows how to write them, and to see if, if grants are available for repaving. I know nothing about writing grants, we need somebody that knows how to write them and to see if grants are available for repaving Main Street. That is a county road, the city doesn't have the money.
I know.
No, it's a city road, the county does not take responsibility between the bridges.
Between them.
Oh.
That's why we don't have enough money to fix it.
And ITD does have grants, but it's a process, I've been reading some paperwork coming through, it's a process and, and you know, we were not gonna get it right away, but we could most definitely plan for it and see if we can.
Apply for it.
See, like the Cottonwood Bridge was, to repay that was $12,000 because that's in the city limits, the county would not do it. When that all broke up, the one over here, 12,000 bucks for 40 feet of pavement.
And an old road.
So it's expensive, but I mean, grants, we could improve something like Russ is talking about, key spots.
I'll get them to ask you.
Yeah, go find us a grant for a couple mil.
I'll just see what she says.
All right, great.
She might not do it for free, I'll come down and talk to her.
All right, let's move on. Approval of 2014 beer license for Chabang Days Beer Garden. Crusaders Motorcycle.
Crushers, I like that.
Brian?
Yeah, that's me. Um, well, I'm here because I heard you guys wanna create a permit now for us to do this. There's already been one.
I was gonna say, that doesn't cover, the one we do?
Yeah.
What one we do?
We say you can have.
Right, just like me having ones.
Yeah, you have a permit, Saddle Plug has a permit, but yours are a year.
License too.
Yours is a year long permit.
For Chabang Days, we allow.
It's a one, but that's true.
Chabang Days is, is gonna, they have a permit.
A resolution.
That.
Covers the town.
Covers the town for open paner.
Around on the streets. What the beer garden is, is selling. Now, I initially told Brian, well, we just have it for a year, I don't know what they have for a day, go to Nespers County. They have one to three day permit at Nespers County and what we can do is give him a city cul-de-sac permit, like we do for you and the Saddle Plug, for one day. It's good for this day, expires on the next day and decide on a minimal fee for a one day permit. This is the first time, I think, that it's been done.
We can't do ours until he has the county first.
He's got the county, don't you?
Right, he has the paperwork.
No, I have the paperwork from the, the state police.
Yeah, state police.
Yeah, for the alcohol, yeah, because we're nonprofit, we're a sure nonprofit.
We can't, we can't do ours until they get that, once you have that one, we're good to go.
Okay, what's, what's our fee gonna be? What are you guys talking about here?
Well, it's for, who are you doing it for, veterans?
Well, yeah, we're nonprofit, we make a large donation every year to the vets, so that's what this helps with. That's, that's what we're, you know, that's what all this is about. So, Jim Community wanted, you know, wanted this, therefore too, so.
They, they signed up on it.
What's the county give us?
You have to charge them?
Charge them a dollar. I'll pay it.
No.
They're doing it for.
Yeah, it's not a profit.
I said I'd pay it.
Oh, you're gonna pay it?
You have $10,000.
I said a dollar and I'll pay it.
All right, I think so.
Why are you offering the?
Well, let's, let's, I'd entertain a motion.
I just move, we charge them $1 and give them official permit, enough to, well, make it $5.
You can't do the official permit until after you get to the paperwork.
Right.
But he cannot pick it up, he needs to give me the official paperwork and then he gets the paper.
Overstepping our bounds and saying yes he can.
I, I think it'll give $5 to him.
He just billups it to $5.
Give them $5.
Okay, what do you need?
$5 for your time?
We all said yes, he decided to sign it. As soon as you get to the paperwork, he just signed it. Well, I need to know, what I'm saying is, I need to know before, I don't wanna, you know, we're gonna get through all this paperwork and I come back and it's, oh, we've decided to charge you $100.
No, no, no.
Oh, we, you know, we're gonna solve that right now, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, let me know how much, you know.
You could make a motion contentious on the paperwork being turned in, can you do that?
Yeah, exactly.
So that we don't have it on an agenda again.
Then we made a letter for a payment of $1 and it's.
There you go.
And, okay, we'll make a motion, somebody.
And you actually have a form in there.
I know, the form probably costs more than the dollar, but.
You probably got copies already, so it's been paid for.
Someone wanna entertain a motion for.
I will make that motion, we charge them $1 on the showing of the county permission to operate a beer garden and then even receive a comparable permit.
Where's we gonna get it?
Food court.
He says where you're gonna have it.
Uh, we're gonna be right there on the corner of where the, the food bank is, right there on the corner of the food court.
In the food court.
Oh, you have a food court?
Yeah, that's part of the food court, we're right there on the corner.
I can't do anything. I'll second it.
Joanne seconded it?
Seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And you have to, Maureen, you guys know that I didn't vote.
She had, she had stayed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your donation.
Now we go about the beer garden.
Now you're gonna go home?
We'll put a beer garden up.
Oh, it's a, it's there, you're.
See you later, Russ.
See y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
Usually we're done and home by 8 o'clock, guys, sorry, it's getting so late tonight.
Well, no, we should have turned.
Community work and financial plan agreement.
Should have this thing checked.
I move that we have a resolution for the Jim Community to work and the financial plan with the Idaho Department of Corrections. Let's move on, move it, get it over with.
All in favor?
Aye. Damn.
Motion carried.
Didn't he say at that last, at our training session, that we can skip all business? Yeah, we should have.
Yeah, I did.
I didn't think it was gonna take that long for the table that.
It didn't look like there was that much of.
But there are five, five different groups here for the dust.
Well, that was great, I'm glad that came up when it did, but I think the water line situation was just a miscommunication, that was, that's. Doesn't well listen to us.
Actually, Valley Sweeping Proposal.
I shouldn't say.
Boy, I hope for that, I'm ready.
I have a proposal from Valley Sweeping.
There's more?
It's gonna be 400, yeah, it's a two-page agenda bill.
It's $400.
I know.
Well, 400 to 600, she said.
The quote is 400 to 600, they're doing it on hourly basis, which made it less money last year than the prior past two years. But it depends on how much cleaning they're doing, how dirty the streets are and so it's a, a good quote, I feel, we have the money in this street fund.
I, I move to do the sweeping.
What date do we want?
Do you wanna, um.
Should be nice to have that done before Chabang.
Should be.
Do you wanna pick a date that's.
I'll second.
And, um.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so it's been, now we have to pick a date.
So, um.
Your garage sale is June 7th, Chabang is 14th.
That's right.
So you're on late being.
If our water truck, car just worked and we ran it and ran down Main Street and took some of the dust off the Main Street, did that help?
On sweeping?
No, prior to sweeping, getting some of this dust off, you know, Mike's got it down at his end, I've got it at my end, you know, and. 25 mile an hour speed limit is a joke because they're doing a lot faster than that when the.
Yeah, a lot of them do.
Oh, my neighbors are terrible at it.
It's everywhere, it's not, you know, Cul-de-sac Avenue.
It was in June 3, 4, 5 or 6, because I guess it's got four in the yard sale.
Joanne, June 3, 4th, 5th, 6 is a Friday, so yard sale is Saturday.
3rd, 4th or 5th?
3rd, June the 6th.
Request on one of those days and keep the calendar there.
But when you sweep, then those people mow their yard and throw all of their house back around. It's out there right now.
I got, I got night coverage on my lawn there.
Not up the street they own.
That's the street they own.
Or where they put that new sugar house.
Oh, your house, yeah.
And that's gonna be one of the miscellaneous things, they're able to stop that.
It's kinda hard to control citizens' rude behavior.
Pardon?
Hard to control citizens' rude behavior.
Oh, yeah, and they're ignorant, they don't know any difference, I mean, just stop arguing with this, trying to explain what you do in Georgia, you can't do in Idaho, you can't do in Arizona. They don't get it.
The other date we need to set, and I think we're on the next agenda, is the Walco dusters, they have the same quote as last year, it's $400 for the weekend for the two.
I think we should do that one before, because if we did it that 31st, that, isn't that Memorial Day?
Right, you have the calendar, I think the 23rd is.
It was the last Memorial Day, it wasn't very full, was it?
I think they're gonna count.
That was running over last year.
Oh, the 24th and the 31st, either one will be early.
The 23rd or the 30th, Memorial Day is the 26th, so this would be the Friday of the Memorial Day and then this 30th would be the Friday after Memorial Day. Do you have a preference?
The after one would be.
I think that would be.
People are gonna be gone, they're gonna be here, so the after one would be.
So you wanted to.
That's 30th?
Yeah.
Does someone wanna make a motion?
I move we have the dumps to clean up.
Then this.
The 2nd is 30. 6, 6:30.
6:30.
The 5:30.
June 6th, there.
I'll second it.
I seconded it already.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And a nice thing is garage sales the next week and they dump all their crap afterward, take grants. And we could dump them in the Chabang dumpster on the next week.
Set a date for budget hearing.
You had August something in you?
I would like to recommend the date to have the budget hearing be August 21st at 6, you have the calendar, Mike? The reason being for that date is that it gives us the two Thursdays before in August to advertise the budget, before we have the budget hearing at 6. Um, and then. It gives me time to notify the county of our, our budget.
Yeah, because it has to be in the paper.
Because it has to be in the paper and.
Okay, I move we set the date for the budget hearing August 3rd at 6 o'clock.
Joanne?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Forgiveness of water connection charges on account 1211, 413 Main Street.
Is that lanes?
This is what I was asking to follow up on and basically, this is our form, but I adjusted it a bit because it's not really overages. They were asking for forgiveness of their water connection charges, that, because they hadn't been having water for 10 years and been paying in pain. So what I have is, to the city council from City Clerk, water connection charges. The following account is requesting forgiveness of water connection charges due to no service for many years. The water major has been removed and is sericapped for this account. The account number is 1211 and the amount is $123.66. Do we want to?
Well, truly, your point, they're not gonna pay it.
They're not gonna pay it, I mean, the problem is, why did they wait so long?
He was mayor.
Right, right.
Why wasn't it taken care of then? Why are we the big dad guys for not doing it?
Right.
Well, on the other end is when we agreed to the sewer thing. I thought the whole resolution was resolved on that and it was, again, miscommunication and Terry should have known that, you know, he's gotta bring his flames up, but I. It's been a long time, no water is paid for, so we'd rather other people have more.
I agree.
More allowance for overages than having one. So it would be easier just to, I'd say we. I'm gonna move we just give forgiveness of the 112, whatever the amount is.
$123.66. And Joanne?
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Motion carried.
You pass that on to Terry, I guess. You wanna cook? I'm gonna need a one-minute break.
Yeah, let's take a break, can we, please? And then go into executive session.
Well, as I said, you know, I don't know why we weren't all thinking, you know, you know, there was two women doing that job, why we thought she was gonna take on the new job and.
Oh, I know, I know.
I don't know, none of us were thinking.
No.
I mean, and she, we should have hollered for help, you know.
Well, I mentioned it.
Did you?
Couple weeks ago, that she should.
Well, I've seen her down there a lot.
She had fought, decided on someone she wanted to help with and then we'd bring it up at the meeting and.
Are you willing to give a day? I thought if you gave a day and I give a day and we hire Carol for a couple, you know, to give her time to get, once we get on on those audits. Me, another job? Just, just, just do it. Collins and take money, you know, so she can just work on the audit.
Yeah.
I mean, we gotta keep moving.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for coming, Mike.
We also.
Oh, I don't know, I had it for the.
Yeah, just do the audit. Well, I talked to her about that, I'm not sure Sharon's up to that.
No, I'm sure Sharon's not.
I mean, I could see.
I don't know, I could see Sharon. And I, and I should have caught it, I mean, I dealt with it for so long.
I never thought.
Are we done?
No, they're taking a break. I never thought it was. Talked about it in nine days.
Oh, there's a hybrid directly across the street from the Jones Court.
That's what I thought. From that driveway that goes down, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And so, you know, I don't know if she can help Maureen or if there's somebody that just does those kind of things.
Remember when I was asking Sharon about the audit, she got a little, it was, it was too much at the time, so.
That was just the Jim Community part.
Yeah.
Yeah, it shouldn't have been that hard.
No, I don't know, I don't know what.
I don't either, and I, and maybe she can help Maureen through it and that's all, we could give her a day a week, just to do that, you know. Okay, library, school board, so yeah, I have to do school negotiations too, because food bank is Wednesday, so Wednesday morning from 11 to 1 is food bank. 3 o'clock is school negotiations, contract negotiations, 6 to 7 is food bank and school board is 7 to whatever.
We're glad you have school day.
Or maybe, you know, we'll just have to give her Fridays. Yeah, she's, I've seen her down there on Fridays.
Yeah, but I would pay her.
Pay her for the Fridays. Because, you know, I know she was doing two jobs, what two women were doing, but you know, Sharon was only working three, will Carol come down? Well, she has her set up for that, workshop she's going to. Okay, and Carol needs to be trying to do more than sit and answer the phone.
I don't know, she's up to that, did she have a great presentation?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, when we get into executive session.
Well, good, don't double the work, so.
I know, I know, these are long meetings.
You're gonna double my wage?
Yes, well.
I'll miss, I don't think so.
If you will mention it to Chris, she might be interested in helping too.
Oh, oh, man.